The silence is quiet. And it feels like it's getting hard to breathe. And I know you feel like dying. But I promise we'll take the world to his feet. I won't take. Bring it to his feet. I'll dance. And I'll rise up. I'll rise like the day. I'll rise up. I'll rise unafraid. I'll rise up. And I'll do it a thousand times again. You. 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 All we need. All we need is hope. And for that, we have each other. And for that, we have each other. Yeah. We will rise. We will rise. We will rise up. We'll rise. I'll rise up. Rise like the day. I'll rise up. In spite of the ache. I will rise. A thousand times again. And we'll rise up. I like the waves will rise up. In spite of the ache. We'll rise up. And we'll do it a thousand times again. You. 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 You.
Thank you for taking me out. Good evening, Hume four nation. Hello, welcome. Welcome to our town hall. Thank you for being here with us this evening. This is being recorded, and so if you miss any part of this, you will receive it over email, so you'll be able to catch up on anything that you missed or share it with another caregiver that's not able to make it this evening. Of course, I'm your principal, Ms. Keen, and I welcome you along with the rest of the leadership team, Mr. Drexler, our DSO, Mr. Bowery, our assistant principal, Mr. Ogall, our assistant principal. All right, so today, this evening, we're going to go over updates on our onsite intervention plan. We're going to give some reminders regarding the end of the trimester, Regents updates, junior updates, senior updates, and upcoming events. We've structured the agenda so that if you are not the caregiver of a junior or senior, you'll be able to get all the information that you need so that you can hop off prior to us going into those updates. All right, so we can get into it. While we are presenting this evening, you can chat questions to the host, and we will periodically stop and answer questions as we're able to. And Mr. Bowery, right now, is going to also chat in a form that you can use to put in any personal questions that you might have that, you know, require someone following up with you personally. And if we can't answer one of your questions tonight, we will follow up with you, so please be sure. If your name is not clear in Zoom, please be sure to put your name with your question so that we know who to follow up with. All right, so I wanted to just open with our most recent community newsletter, which I'll be sending out tomorrow. And this is a newsletter that we send out to our broader community, as well as you all, of course, to just share highlights from the most recent month or two. We try to do it every month. So one of the things that we spotlighted in this newsletter is, first of all, a huge thank you to our senior capstone project judges. So if you're not the caregiver of one of our 14 finalists, then you might not know what I'm talking about. But everything at Hume four culminates in what we call the Senior Capstone Project, and it really is the demonstration of what it means to be an artist scholar at Hume four. And this is the first time that we've made it all the way through to the end of this process. And certainly, the last year in remote learning has made that more difficult, but it was a remarkable experience. And so we shout out our inaugural judges there, and we can't wait for these projects to manifest. I'll be announcing the projects that were selected and how much money they were allocated at the end of this week. And all of our seniors, whether or not they were the ones authoring the project, everyone participates in a senior capstone project in trimester three, and then at the end of the year, we'll celebrate the impact of those projects. And the project with the most impact on the community will receive a scholarship to graduation. All of our students will be recognized for their roles in this process. So we shout out our judges there, who came from all over the country and represented local officials, educators, authors, professors, school leaders, other people that have started schools. And our students absolutely blew them away. I am still receiving messages and feedback about how impressive their presentations were. Not just impressive because of the knowledge that they were able to share, but also because of the fact that they were personal. They were personal projects that spoke to our students' lived experiences and their hopes and dreams for the community. Post-secondary planning, we also just wanted to highlight our work there, and I'll be showing a slide on that later. But just one specific highlight. In addition to being able to announce college acceptances and other post-secondary plans that are emerging, currently, our seniors have earned over $700,000 worth of scholarships. So a huge shout out to, to all of our seniors as they start to finalize their post-secondary plans, and a huge shout out to their 12th grade advisors, some of whom have been with them for four years, and to our college and career counselor, Ms. Hussein, and most definitely to Mr. Bowery, who supports our senior cohort. One of our teachers, Ms. Bigum, who is a living environment teacher, wrote a little article in our newsletter just about what authentic assessment is. So that project that I was just talking about, the Senior Capstone Project, is an example of authentic assessment. And so there's a little article here with an example of one of those projects. And I'll just read it aloud. It's the second paragraph here. But an example of an authentic assessment is our Senior Capstone Project. Samantha's project, La Mariposa, is a project that will result in an installation in our campus that represents the stories of immigrant students and their families as a way of elevating their experiences, challenging stereotypes, and building community on campus. You can go to the next slide, I mean, the next part of the newsletter, thanks. And then the last page of the newsletter, we just highlighted just some recent different initiatives and things, and specifically just how to attend a open house, which we have every Wednesday at 6:00 PM, and how to apply, of course. And just really, really, really excited. If you do not know, our new chancellor for the Department of Education in New York City is actually a native, far rockaway resident, which is a huge, huge deal. So Misha Porter is our new chancellor of education, and we can't wait to welcome her to our campus and get to know her better. But in honor of both Black History Month and Women's History Month, and moving from one to the other, we specifically recognized her at the start of March. All right, so the trimester is almost over. Oh, my God, it's amazing. End of trimester two is the 17th, and that is on Wednesday of next week. And the next trimester, of course, begins the following day on the 18th. Our end-of-term grading policy is still in effect. So if you hear your student or students that are on this call, just remember that you can turn in product assignments and process assignments right up until through the 17th. And you should do that. You can get full credit on your products. You can get up to 80% on your process tasks if they're late. So be sure to get in as much as you can so that you get as much credit as possible. Also, as a reminder, with our end-of-term grading policy, if a student does not pass the class by the end of the trimester, they will receive an incomplete that they'll need to make up over trimester three. So students and caregivers, if you still have any incompletes from trimester one, you need to make that up by the, by the 17th, okay? So it's the same, same deal. Really important that you self-advocate. It's one of the things I'm most proud of with our students and something that we really try to foster and teach into. It is okay to ask for help. It is your right as a student to ask for help when you need it. And just remember that, you know, sometimes you might not get the answer the first time or the just right help the first time. So be sure to ask someone else, or you can always reach out to the leadership team or to your cohort counselor, to your advisor. But don't, don't be quiet. If you don't know what to do to complete any work from trimester one, or if you're not sure if there's anything you need to finish for trimester two, now's the time to ask those questions. Next slide. And Wednesday is all about getting that help. So you can, of course, get help outside of Wednesdays when you go to your synchronous classes or by setting up another support session with a staff member. However, Wednesdays are for office hours and R1. So just as a reminder, these are office hours. Okay? And your teachers are there to help you make up anything or to get clarity. Okay? And this might be a good thing to take a picture of if you're not sure about the schedule or you just want a reminder. Next slide. So R1 also is on Wednesdays, and this is always from 1:00 to 1:45. And R1 reflection is specifically for making up incompletes from trimester one right now. And so there's one more this coming Wednesday for makeup work from trimester one. Again, if you're not sure what the link is or any of that, you want to get that clarity so that you can attend R1 next week. All right, I must say that aside from getting to interact with some of our seniors for their Senior Capstone Project, it has been the highlight of the last few weeks, just to see families and students that were able to come to supply pickup this past Monday and Tuesday. And if you missed it, if you weren't able to come on Monday and Tuesday, the leadership team is onsite every Monday and Tuesday, and so you can come by. And just, you don't have to make an appointment. If you let the folks at the security desk know, they'll notify us, and we will bring your supplies to you. But we just ask that you come on Monday and Tuesday, starting this coming Monday. You can come between 10:00 and 4:00 PM. Two really important upcoming dates. Wednesday will be our Growth and Achievement Community Meeting, Wednesday, April 7th. Those are during the day. We will let you know exactly the times with the Zoom links. And I just want to be really clear that caregivers are absolutely welcome. This is not a internal staff and students-only event, and we'll make sure that you have those links and information. These meetings are where we celebrate work from the trimester, awards students have received for perfect attendance, growth, achievement, and any other endeavors they've had that, that, that we want to celebrate and acknowledge. As well, we're offering SAT, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later on, okay? On April 13th and the 27th. Okay. I'm going to talk now about onsite intervention and the update there. So I have always tried to lead from a place of transparency and relationship. And my relationships with my families and students matter a great deal to me in addition to my relationships with our staff. I believe that relational trust has to be the foundation for any successful organization. And that really comes down to communication, reliability, integrity, generosity. So, you know, when I think about my relationships with our families and students, what can I say? I want to say that I never, I never want you to feel in the dark. And I never want you to feel frustrated because you're not sure what's going on. And I know that there was a recent announcement about high schools opening. And so I'm going to try to provide you tonight as much information as I can about how that update impacts us and where things are at with our onsite intervention model. Okay? So if you did not hear, the DOE announced that on March 18th and 19th, staff would be reporting back to campuses in high schools in the Department of Education. And that on March 22nd, students would be able to report as well. 20% of their students will start coming in on March 22nd. They also shared that PSAL would resume in April. As part of this, I have been told that the vaccination site that is located on Beach Channel Educational Complex will be stopping on March 22nd in support of the campus resuming in-person instruction for 20% of their students. The other schools on our campus, if you do the math, will be bringing in about, in total, 500 students. And that's across all the schools. So this announcement, however, does not pertain to New Vision's charter high schools. And just as a reminder, our school is part of a network of schools. And I think it's my papers. So, right, so this announcement does not pertain to New Vision, however. And the leadership team has been working for months in collaboration with the teachers' union on an agreement for in-person learning. And we've shared plans that start, as I've shared in previous town halls, we've shared plans that detail us serving up to 25% of our students two days a week. We identified students that we feel need that support for various reasons and have received consent to begin in-person intervention from the majority of the caregivers of those students. And 25% of our students for us is about 80 students. Our plans include testing and health and safety guidelines that reflect the CDC guidelines. And that also include our own personal health consultant that we would have on campus. The leadership team has also been working hard onsite to set up our classrooms and ensure all necessary materials, signage, PPE, and entry dismissal procedures are in place in collaboration with the other schools on our campus. Unfortunately, we have not yet reached an agreement with the union, which would allow us to have staff support in the building. And as a result, we have not yet announced a start date for our in-person intervention support outside of what the leadership team can offer. While remote learning has worked well for some of our families and students, we also know it has not worked well for others. And that is just the reality of human, human beings and different circumstances. This is not a reflection on our students and families. This is just the reality that some things work well for, for some. And for some of our students and families, this is not working well. A school should be a place of refuge, unwavering support, and high expectations for what's possible. And if in-person learning is something that you feel your family and students need at this time, you should have that option at this time. I hope we can begin offering in-person intervention, starting with 10% of our students and growing to 25% after spring break. And spring break is the last week of March. We come back April 5th from spring break. I had so hoped that I would be able to give you a firm date this evening, but I cannot. And for that, I am very sorry. I've asked myself a lot these two questions over the past year. What's at risk and what are we willing to risk? I'm doing everything I can within a system I don't have complete control over to provide equitable services to all of our students and to create a safe environment for our staff and students and families. And I will continue to do so. In support of this, if onsite intervention is something that you and your family want, please take a moment now or throughout this town hall to share your thoughts and feelings with me via the form that Mr. Bowery is going to chat in at this time. And I want to be very clear that your voice matters. However you stand on this issue, whether you want your child to stay home or have in-person support, your voice matters, and we want to hear from you. And we want to be able to elevate your voice. That is part of my job, is to elevate the voices of my students and families. We can move on to the presentation. We're going to take questions at this time. We're going to stop. And so if you have a question about anything, if we're able to answer it, you can chat it in at this time, and we'll hold space for a moment for that. This is not the only opportunity to ask questions, however, at this time, please. Feel free to do so. All right, we'll give it a little bit more time. You can ask questions throughout the rest of the presentation, and I'll circle back at the end. And if there are questions regarding reopening, I'll answer them at that time. And feel free to complete the form that's in the chat at any part during this town hall.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So as Principal Keen said, my name's Carl Bowery. I'm one of the assistant principals at the school. And so we just wanted to provide an update of some other things that parents and students have been asking questions about. One of them is about the Regents. New York State did release a memo a couple of weeks ago about Regents updates that we wanted to share with everyone. As of right now, New York State applied for a waiver. As you know, there is a federal mandate, Every Student Succeeds Act, that requires states to test students in certain subject areas each year. For high school students, our schools are required to test students in English, science, and math during their high school career. As of right now, because the state hasn't received a waiver, they are making plans in case they don't receive the waiver. And as of right now, the plans that they are reviewing is that they would only administer the English, Algebra I, Living Environment, and Earth Science exam. Obviously, we don't know exactly what this means yet in terms of sitting for students or the administration. But we did just want to provide this one little update that the state has given in regards to Regents exams in case the federal government doesn't give New York State a waiver for state testing. And then on Monday, myself and Ms. Hussein, our college career counselor, held a junior night. We had about 32 participants there, which was great to see. But we did want to just use this time as well to inform everyone of some of the updates for juniors. By June, as you know, the college application process is a lengthy one, and it can definitely be stressful in their senior year. So some of the things that we will be working with them on this year before the end of the school year is completing spreadsheets and resumes, developing a college list of eight to 10 schools, one of them being a community school, having college career counseling with our college career counselor, Ms. Hussein, attending college fairs and visits virtually, writing their personal statements, identifying teachers that could write letters of recommendations for them and actually requesting them, and then also working with students and parents to collect documentation that we need for FAFSA. FAFSA does open up October 1st of next year for college applications. So we want to make sure everything is in place. And a lot of the documents you need are the same that you need for taxes. So it makes sense to start collecting them now since tax season is upon us. So we just wanted to provide these updates for the class of 2022 and parents that were here. And then the last update that I have for juniors is we know typically in junior year, in the beginning of senior year, students have the opportunity to take the SAT. One of the initiatives New York City started a few years ago was something called SAT Day, where schools could administer the SAT during school hours instead of a student needing to find a testing site and take the exam on a Saturday. Based on updated guidance, we are going to try, we are planning to administer the SAT either on Tuesday, April 13th, or Tuesday, April 27th, to the group of juniors that are interested in sitting for the exam. So what we do ask is if you are interested and you are a junior for sitting for the SAT, it is free of cost for any student that wishes to take it. So I'm going to put this form in the chat. And all that I ask is everyone, please complete this form if you're interested in taking the SAT either April 13th or 27th. And then once we have final number, if who's interested, we will reach out individually to go over any process or protocols that we need for the SAT administration.
Yeah, so this is amazing. I it's just amazing to have our senior class graduating for the first time. So these are just some of the posts and just a few of our students that have been accepted to college. And we also recognize and will be supporting students with different post-secondary plans. Colleges not the only post-secondary plan. However, we do ensure that all students do apply to at least one college. And again, over 80% of our seniors have a post-secondary plan at this time. And our seniors have earned over $700,000 in scholarships for college so far. And our seniors have earned over seven hundred thousand dollars in scholarships for college so far. Go to the next slide. For our seniors and a few questions have come in just as a note. So I will be answering a few questions that have been coming in. So if you're interested in staying for that, please do. Otherwise, if you know, if if you don't have a senior and you don't have a question or or want to stay on, you could you could leave at this time. It's up to you. I'm just going to go over a few other things about seniors and then I'll answer any questions that have come in. Senior reminders, we do have senior dues. And they include a senior T-shirt for a tie dye party we're going to have at the end of the year. We'll probably have it at O'Donohue Park or something. And it's cool shirt, white, you know, says senior, all that good stuff. But we're going to tie dye it up and have some fun with that. I cannot wait. Of course, we're making a yearbook. And I am trying to do something Hume Four style for our cap gown and tassel. So we're trying to design some pieces to it. And I'll be asking students for some feedback on that. But you know, we're going to step out and look a little different and definitely bring some creativity and art to our capping gown situation. We also have graduation prom, which I'll talk about in a second. So all of your senior dues cover that. And senior dues are two hundred dollars. There are a few different payment options. So of course, you can pay directly with Mr. Drexler and you can come onsite and do that Mondays and Tuesdays. And you can also do it online. If you would like to schedule an appointment with Mr. Drexler, he will put his email in the chat now. And feel free to reach out to him directly to do that. We do have like a payment plan. It does not include a senior trip, which we will schedule later on. We just need to make sure everything is copacetic to do that. But you can do it in different installments or you can pay the full amount if you would prefer in one swoop. Senior activities reminder, we are going to be having our prom on the Harbor Lights cruise boat. And that is going to be on May twenty-eighth. And it's a huge boat, kind of looks like a yacht and super excited about that. It's going to be really fun. And if we have to turn it into a masquerade, then I guess we will. But we'll see. And graduation is going to be Tuesday, June twenty-ninth in the afternoon at Queens Museum, which is a really beautiful space that will be kind of redesigning to outfit lots of student art and can't wait for that as well. All right. Let's now get into some questions and again, I will do my best to be as transparent as possible with the information that I have. And let me just see what is the first one. Thank you. So one question was, and this is hard, right? It's I know that I know how much some of our students want to be back onsite and in school. And I wish that I could tell you that I can guarantee that all of you will be able to have that option before the summer. And I'm sorry that I can't do that this evening. And I also want to be really honest with everybody. I don't think that's going to happen. I don't think that everyone is going to be able to have that option before the summer. And again, I am doing everything that I can with it within a system that I do not have full control over to push progress forward as much as possible so that we can begin onsite intervention first and foremost for our students that really need it right now. And is my daughter allowed to bring a partner for the prom? I hope so. And the boat is certainly large enough and our senior cohort is small enough that I there's no like, we have plenty of space on the boat for their capacity for folks to bring someone to prom. However, that's just going to be determined later on once we, you know, confirm with the company around their capacity at that time. So if they change the capacity number due to, you know, health restrictions, then that might be a no. But my hope is that things will continue to to get in a better place as we see across the city with things opening and infection rates lowering and the vaccine becoming more available. So I think it's only going to get better from here, which is really exciting. Could students come in for sports? So P S A L, of course, is open to our students and I will be communicating with our students as tryouts or information opens up that they can participate in. And of course, they'll be able to participate in P S A L, just like they did before. And so I'll keep you updated on that. They have not given us any information about what sports will be offered and when. And and as those details become clearer, I'll share those out. But our inability to be onsite will not affect student ability to participate in P S A L. That's something that they want to do. Same question with how many people can we bring to graduation? The place is huge and it really is just going to depend on again, like if they put any restrictions on the capacity number in that space. And so I will be able to give you a clear number of guests that each graduate will be able to bring later on in the year. So just as a reminder, graduation isn't until June twenty-eighth. So we have a lot of time between now and then to get clarity on that. Would such things as the weight room be available again on campus? The weight room is actually something that will be under renovation this year as part of our S C A grant. So as long as that is not under construction and is open, if that's something that P S A L is using, then that would be something that students might be able to access as part of P S A L. To my knowledge, right now, it is not being used. But that could change and I'll keep you updated on that. P S A L, that is, that's the sports league that works in the Department of Education and provides different sports on campuses. And someone asked about eleventh grade reporting on Mondays and Tuesdays. And that is in response to, we have a small number of seniors that have been checking in with the leadership team on Mondays and Tuesdays as needed. And obviously, the leadership team is for people and we're doing the most that we can in under the circumstances. And at this time, you know, that is what we're able to do and and as things change, I'll let you know. How many schools do we share the building with? Great question. There are there is Channel View High School, and that is a middle and high school. There's Rock Park, which is a small high school collegiate high school. Gateway is a D seventy-five school. And there's also a Restart Academy. So we have quite a few. They're all pretty small, except for Channel View, the largest school on campus. We are now the second largest school, which is cool. All right, so to close and thank you for your time this evening. I just want to reiterate again that you are not just the caregivers of your students, you are also our clients. You are the folks that know your kids the best. And we cannot do great work without you. And I cannot thank you enough for your continued trust and resilience, communication, patience throughout the last year as we've been in remote learning. And we are going to get through this time. We will get back to a place of normalcy where we are all onsite, safely together, learning and continuing to build on campus. That being said, to all of my artist scholars who are creating something remarkable at home, outside, virtually, I'm proud of you. We're proud of you. Keep up the great work. I'll see you soon. Thank you.